Then, oh, wow, and look, it's the same like multi-colored one that I like. I won't steal that one. I'll just know it's there for future.
No, I don't, I wanna be.
Yeah.
Turn it on.
All right.
Testing, testing.
Calling the January 4th Planning Commission meeting in North Kansas City to order. First order of business is approval of the agenda of the January 4th. No, today is January 4th.
Yeah.
Motion to approve the agenda for the meeting, including the election of officers.
So moved.
Second, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. So I guess we'll do the election of officers.
Madam Chairman, I would nominate Jonathan Barnes to continue as our fearless leader. The chairman?
I will second that.
A motion to approve Jonathan as the, as the Chair of the Planning Commission?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
He's not here, so I feel good.
He won by default.
All opposed? All right, Jonathan is our fearless leader. What other officers are we?
I would like to nominate Laura for Secretary.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
Cannot oppose your own.
Is that, that's it? Okay, great, moving on. Approval of minutes, so I ask for a motion to approve minutes.
Of November the 2nd.
Of November the 2nd, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. All right, fourth item on the agenda, conditional use permit for Madras Development. I think that Sarah has a staff report.
I do, so we start with procedure and then we'll invite the applicant who's here tonight to address you. This is a conditional use permit that covers two items. One is the expansion of a non-conformity and that the building currently encroaches into the required side yard setbacks on the lot. And it also would arrange a shared parking arrangement between 2019 Iron and 2017 Iron and the next door lot that contains the parking. Conditional use permits require a public hearing before you and then you make a recommendation to the City Council for final action. Our applicant is here tonight, I'll invite him to come up to the podium, come up to the podium and give the Planning Commission an overview of his application.
Okay, I don't have anything prepared.
That's okay.
Informally. My name's Clint Jane, I'm managing member of Madras Development, we are obviously the applicant. And I'm doing the renovation on 2019 Iron, which is the big three-story White House on the corner of Iron and 21st, East 21st Avenue. As Sarah said, we have an issue with, I wanna build a three-story porch on the front of the building, which would create also egress. The entry is gonna be on the rear of the building, so that'll be ingress to the second and third floors. And the three-story porch on the front has to be egress then, obviously, so we have going out. I submitted an initial pla- or do you wanna talk about that? Is that what we're talking about?
Go ahead.
Okay, so I'd submitted an initial plan that had the stairway within the width of the building. Aesthetically and architecturally, that is not the best look, I think, either for the building or for the neighborhood. So we have redesigned that stairway so that the landings extend four feet outside the width of the building. This comes into play most notably between 2019 and 2017. In that there is only about six feet between those two buildings. And so this landing, as it would come off the third floor down to the second floor, would extend really four feet or fully a foot into what would traditionally be the right-of-way or whatever, however that's referred to, for 2017 Iron Street. Am I making sense? Isn't there a, Mallory, did you do a?
Yes.
And they have, they have.
You have all the pictures of all of it.
We're looking at them.
So that's the primary, and then when you get to the second floor, that is on the south side of the, of the building. When you get to the second floor, you would cross over to the north side of the building and then the landing extends. But we have a full eight feet from the building to the city, to the easement. So we're well within tolerance there, but I believe that there are some considerations around side yard usage, so this would speak to that. Is that correct, Sarah? Yeah, more or less, I'm in the ballpark. So then we go from the second floor down to the ground floor, so. I can't turn around, you won't be able to hear me, so. That basically covers it, and then the parking permit on the south side of 2017 Iron Street, that really has two lots. One of them is a parking lot that runs full depth from Iron Street all the way back to the property border. And so I'm gonna enter into a parking agreement with myself to provide parking for 2019 Iron Street at the 2017 parking lot. Have I covered it? And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Do any of the commissioners have questions?
If you don't have questions for Clint, I'm happy to go over our staff report, too.
Oh, it looks like there is.
Sure, yeah.
All right.
The small building behind 2017 is what?
Is a, it's a renovated unit, I'm almost done with it.
So, so it is a one-bedroom unit?
It's a studio, technically.
And the 2017 building has how many units in it?
Duplex.
So, so there's three parking spaces there, correct?
Correct.
And the 2019 has how many units in it?
It'll have four units.
That are one and two bedrooms, or?
Three one-bedrooms, one two-bedroom.
So there's two and then five and then eight, correct, total? Am I right in my calculations?
Yes, sir. And I believe if you, if you calculated, I don't know what the ordinance is in North Kansas City, I think standard parking widths are eight feet. And that particular parking lot extends from the front border, and it's 110 feet deep, but 10 feet of that is grass, so it's 100 feet deep.
So there's ten spots.
There's room for 11 spots, 11 or 12 spots there. More than enough. So parking for every bedroom, plus a couple for visitors.
And this parking lot now is?
It's a parking lot.
I understand that, but what is its base? Is it concrete, is it asphalt, is it gravel, is it?
Asphalt.
I, I think it's not striped right now.
It is not striped.
It's worn, but it's paved.
That's all the questions I have.
I invite the.
I have a couple.
Oh, oh, okay.
Yes, sir. I was curious, this building has been, are you a new owner?
I am, I purchased the building last June.
Okay. Why, any ideas why it's been empty so long?
Yeah, it was condemned three years ago, there was a storm, there, there used to be a tree, a tree in the northeast corner of that lot. Big storm came through, limb came down, ripped the power line and meters off the back of 2019. The current owner at that time elected not to do any renovations or repairs, made the building uninhabitable, sat condemned for three years.
But it's structurally sound, I mean, that makes me a little nervous that we're gonna repurpose a condemned building.
Well, we don't use the word condemned. We declared it uninhabitable, not because we thought it was structurally unsound, but because of the utility issues. And then, you know, there was no certificate of occupancy, it's been vacant, at a certain point, you have to bring the building up to existing code with the zoning ordinance and the building code. So they have a building permit for renovating the building right now, and work is going on, but it's going on to bring the building up to our existing building codes. I will tell you, I've walked through the building with Clint, and there were a couple of spots that were a little, made me a little nervous because, you know, you've done demo and so you could see through the floor. But we're confident that when he's finished, it will be structurally sound.
If I might interject, sir, the, the very first work, apart from demolition, the first reconstructive work I had done, I had an engineer walk through the building with me and a, and a foundation expert, and we did some stabilization to the foundation, which included supporting the I-beam with a new, they call it a number 40 column and an eight, eight-foot pad in the basement floor, and repaired some, some of the old concrete wall around the foundation. So we secured the floor, secured the foundation before we've done really anything else.
It's getting all-new electrical.
Okay, my, my only other thing was, and Tom, maybe you could help me with this. It seems to me a few years ago, we discussed this very thing, rent, having these houses, basically these small dwellings that have two, three, four occupants.
Units, you mean?
Yeah, units. I thought at the time that we were gonna try to move away from that. Am I mistaken in that, or?
The density for this particular building is, is appropriate, it's zoned R4, so that's not the non-conformity in this case. You can construct that many units in this zoning district.
Okay, all right.
If I might, sir, also, the building had five living units in it. Two on the first floor, two on the second floor, and the third floor. And I'm taking that down to four units instead of five.
No, and I get that, and this really has, it's not your fault, but.
I understand.
It, you know, we have a lot of those type of facilities, and I think the general consensus is, we'd rather not have all those kinds of facilities, but, but I'm just putting that out there because it has been discussed before, so I'm just curious if we're ever gonna get to the point where we're gonna say no to these kinds of things, or if this is gonna be a perpetual cup situation.
Right, in this case, if you wanted to say no to this applicant, your no would only impact the stairs.
Right.
It would not impact the number of units.
I get that, I get that. I guess I'm just trying to bring that up so that we can have this discussion in the future over these types of facilities.
That would be a discussion while we're discussing the zoning ordinance update, and, I mean.
We're gonna get there, right?
Yeah, we're gonna get, and we'll talk about that at the end of our agenda tonight.
Okay, I get, okay, I got you, all right.
I guess, just, just a quick word on that, and I wasn't here for the discussions on, I guess you're talking about small, like duplex and triplex apartments, is that what you're talking about? I personally don't have any problem with those units in the city, I'm not trying to be antagonistic, but I just wanted to say, like, since we are, like, people could be watching us on TV, I guess, that I don't, I don't have a problem with those units, and I welcome talk about that when we look at the zoning ordinance.
Mr. Wood, if I might interject, in the work that I've already done on 21st Avenue, in the properties that I've purchased, there have been multiple units within a duplex. There might be four living units in a duplex. There are basement units that, when I acquired the properties, were either, had been used or had recently been abandoned or vacated. In every case, I have returned those properties only to a duplex. I have created demo in the basement, literally gutted the basement, created laundry facilities, storage facilities. None of my units have excessive capacity, and, and I believe that this building falls in that exactly the same category. Certainly, as I said, from a reduction in the number of living units down to comply with what the zoning is.
No, I have no doubt that it's gonna be up to snuff, I mean, for, and it'll be used for what it's supposed to be used for, but as part of a larger discussion, and I, you probably aren't aware of this, but at some other committees, some other meetings, some other teams that we've had, one of the things we keep discussing is, we're, we are so heavily, heavily, heavily rental property. And, you know, I notice your company's based out of Parkville, but you have a 913 area code listed, so in my opinion, you're an absentee owner, which I'm particularly not fond of, but I have no doubt that the building's gonna be fine and be used properly. It's just the whole, in the whole structure of what makes up our city, it's one more thing, it's one more rental property, it's one more exception, it's one more cup. And, you know, as, as a longtime member of North Town, and I'm very vested in the city, that's one of the things I would really like to see us address, which has nothing to do with you, I'm sure you're gonna be fine, I have no problem with that, but it's just part of a larger issue that we keep going around and around and around.
Appreciate that. If I might, I've had my phone number for 15 years, and I did, in fact, used to live in Kansas at one point in those 15 years. Yes, I do live in Parkville, but the work that my development company has been doing exclusively has been in North Kansas City for the last year and a half. I've invested heavily in North Kansas City, and I think that the Development Department, certainly the inspectors, can attest to the quality of the work that I've done. And, and we have elevated these properties, and one of the points that I made in the last City Council meeting that I attended was that there are far fewer police calls, interactions, visits on 21st Avenue than there have been for years prior. I started renovating in Mar- a year ago March, and we have pushed out, that's the wrong term to use. Out past the renovation, I have increased rents to market levels. Invested a lot of money, created a better living environment, a better property, meet all the codes, all the ordinances, have brought them up to snuff when they had not been for years, many, many years prior. I'm proud of the work that we've done, and I, and I appreciate what you're saying. I promise you, I'm not an absentee owner in the sense that I live in Cincinnati and some management company sends me a rent check. I'm down here every single day. And unfortunately for Mallory, she gets to see me multiple times a week. And it's been a pleasure to work with the Development Office. Sarah's been terrific, and, and this particular project, 2019 Iron, has created, honestly, has been a challenging project because of its age, because of its proximity, because of its profile. And I'm gonna spend an awful lot of money bringing that building up to speed. I've shown Sarah some pictures of the design in terms of what I'm trying to replicate. And I, I'm, I'm proud to say that I think that, that North Kansas City's gonna be very proud of the building when we're completed.
I'm glad, too, because all the people that keep bugging me about, why don't they do something with that? Now I can tell them they are doing something about that, so I appreciate that.
They are, in fact.
It's been quite the eyesore, so I'm glad that.
Thank you.
Absolutely. And we do have new riff on it, too, I forgot to mention that.
Thank you.
Thanks, great. Does anyone else have any questions?
I'm sorry, I'm late.
Just one question on the parking, is that parking lot then marked as private parking, it's not for public use then, right?
I have signs that I have not posted yet. In part, I'm kind of getting past the, the renovation stage at 2017. I'm almost done with the little, the little unit in the back, the studio unit. As soon as I get that completed, then I'll post no parking signs, or resident parking only.
There used to be a sign there and somebody flattened it, and it never went, never went back, so.
All right, Sarah, forgive me, you have not given your staff report yet, have you?
Staff report, so.
Please do.
I'll start with parking, if you don't mind. You have the two issues that are, are part of this conditional use permit. As Clint mentioned, there are, we count parking spaces required in this zoning district by bedroom, basically. So for each bedroom, there needs to be one parking space. I think that we have a total between 2017 and 2019 of eight bedrooms. There is space for at least 10 parking spaces in that area. Our requirement is nine feet wide, but as he said, the, the parking lot can handle that. So we don't have any concerns about the shared parking arrangement. And, you know, that's probably the bigger issue of the two, is the, the encroachment into the side yards required. If you look at, we did ask the property owner to do a survey and to identify, in particular, the north property line along 21st Avenue, so that we are sure where that is located. The way the building sits on the lot, which was platted back in 1914, the existing side yard is seven and a half to eight feet from 21st Avenue. Our current requirement for a side yard where it's adjacent to a street is 15 feet. On the other side, it's, I think, a couple of feet from the side property line, and we require an eight-foot side setback. So the building already encroaches into both of those required side yards. We do allow for expansion of non-conformities like this with a conditional use permit, and we have a series of criteria to allow that. One is that termination of the non-conformity will result in unnecessary hardship. The only way to get rid of the existing non-conformity would be to tear down the building. And while it has been an eyesore, we would rather see people renovate our existing buildings rather than tear them down. The second criteria is that continuation of the non-conformity is not contrary to the public interest. I really, before we knew exactly where that property line was, we weren't sure how much of a non-conformity there was. So, you know, and that building's been there for a really long time, we don't think it's contrary to the public interest to be, to continue. Continuation of the non-conformity will not substantially or permanently injure the appropriate use of adjacent conforming property in the same district. We, we don't think that that is true. Use is in harmony with the spirit and purpose of the regulations. The R4 district does permit this proposed use, it is, you know, the only issue, the issue here is not the number of units or the use itself, it's just that side yard, so we do find it in harmony with the spirit of the regulations and the master plan. The plight of the applicant is due to unique circumstances, this is certainly not something that Clint has created for himself, it's due to where the building has been sitting for 100 years. The continuation of the non-conformity doesn't weaken the general purposes of the zoning ordinance. And again, the building predates our zoning ordinance, so we don't think it weakens the purposes of the ordinance. And finally, that it won't adversely affect the public health, safety, or welfare. I would point out that, you know, one of the reasons to approve this expansion of the non-conformity is to make it a more attractive use. The stairs are going to be built, if you don't approve this, the stairs will just be built on the front facade rather than on the side. And staff would rather see them on the side because we think it's going to be more attractive, and the applicant does as well. We do recommend some conditions on this conditional use permit. One is the encroachment of the stairways that's going to impact 2017 Iron, because there will be a post that will come down onto the adjoining property, which is under common ownership, and be the subject of a recorded easement benefiting 2019. Second is that we review and approve a, a parking agreement that then will be recorded with the county. We commonly require that with all of our shared parking arrangements that we've approved through conditional use permits. And then number three and four are our typical CUP conditions, that they apply only to the uses described in the application, and that they're contingent upon the operation having no detrimental impacts to the public health, safety, or welfare. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have to.
Does anyone have questions? All right, with that, I open the public hearing. Seeing that there's no one here, I close the public hearing. Well, I guess I can't do that single-handedly. Motion to close, continue public hearing, shall we close the public hearing?
I move to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we're closing the public hearing. All right, does anyone have a recommendation to the City Council? Can I entertain a motion?
I move that we recommend the approval of this with the four conditions that Sarah presented to us at this time.
Second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
This will be on the January 16th City Council agenda.
All right, item.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number five, plan adoption of the Armour Road Complete Street Plan. Please, staff, go on with your report.
I'll let you see if you can fix that. While we see if we can get this up on your screen, we, adoption of, under state law, the Planning Commission takes action for final adoption of all plans. And so the City Council adopted the Armour Road Complete Street Implementation Plan at their meeting in December. And we've been, November, I'm forgetting my dates now. November 21st, or no, it was adopted on December 5th after a, a work session on, on November 21st. And we've been, you know, waiting to put it before you for final adoption pursuant to state law, which also requires a public hearing, so we will be holding a public hearing prior to, to your final adoption. This is a, a plan that we've been working on this year with grant support from the Mid-America Regional Council. We did a lot of outreach around this, particularly to people along Armour Road. And the showcase of that was the demonstration project that we did in September, where we, you know, put in our, our parklet and a temporary bike lane and decorative crosswalks, and invited people to come out and take a look and, and give us their feedback. I'd like to show you the draft that was in your packet, but I will point out that the, we divided this corridor into three sections, downtown transition area and commercial area, and our five key implementation steps. Step number one is to make improvements in the transition and commercial areas from Fayette to Ozark as a step one. Step two, if I remember this correctly, is to do education and outreach around bicycle facilities so that people know how to safely use these or interact with them if they're driving. Step three is to work on our parking management plan, which we're gonna talk about next. I cannot remember what step four is off the top of my head. And step five, step five is to then to come back and consider what we're doing in downtown. There have been, we had it up before the meeting started, so.
Well, no, it's because of PowerPoint, because we put it in whatever mode.
So we are moving forward on steps one, two, and three already, so that was the, the key takeaway of that. I'm happy to answer any questions.
So, does anyone have any questions?
Just curiosity, the first phase ballpark, how long it'll take?
So we've got an RFQ out now to hire an engineer, 'cause we will have to do at least some engineering plans. We hope to have somebody on board in March, April to get, I mean, we have a really clear concept, so hopefully that won't take very long. We're hoping that we can get that out to bid this summer to get a contract awarded. So depending on when that happens, this fall, winter, next spring, to get that all finished.
Okay.
Assuming that everything goes well.
This, this first phase is from Ozark to Fayette?
Yes.
Okay, and that, but then from Fayette to Swift is the second phase?
That would be a future phase that doesn't have a timeframe assigned to it yet because it depends on City Council action.
Does this parking survey thing you got, does that affect the second section from Fayette to Swift, I mean?
Well, one of the things that we heard was the people were concerned about a potential loss of parking spaces if, if that was changed from angle to parallel, and so the parking management plan was intended not just to address whether we could handle that change or the impact of that change, but that's one of the considerations. So, so you get, yes, but not, that's not the only goal with the parking management plan?
Yeah.
All right. So we're again scheduled to have a, open public hearing. I opened the public hearing on this case, but I don't see anyone in the room, so. Sarah, it says to have a staff presentation after you open the public, oh, okay.
That was a staff presentation.
Okay, we're maybe slightly out of order. Yeah, it's okay. All right, there's no public hearing, no public here, so I have a mo- can I, I am making a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. So I will entertain a motion also on whether to, what are we doing, Sarah? So I will entertain a motion also on whether to, what are we doing, Sarah? There's a resolution, okay. Approve Resolution 2018-02, adopting the Armour Road Complete Street Implementation Plan.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Next on the agenda is the overview of the downtown parking survey.
Excellent. Well, this is going to appear on your screen. Hopefully you can all see it.
It's right there.
Okay. We've been talking about this downtown parking study for a little while, and we finally got started on the actual work of surveying in multiple ways of downtown parking in November. And so tonight, we wanted to present to you an overview both of the online opinion surveys that we did in November and December, and also the actual inventory and survey that Billy Hufford, our intern, has been doing over that same time period. So we've each got some data to present to you, and we, our goal tonight is to answer any questions you might have and find out what questions the data might pose to you, like things that we maybe should further explore or flesh out before we start presenting this information to the public. And to get some initial feedback, impressions from you on what you think about the data before our next steps, which we'll describe here at the end. So I'm going to have Billy start by talking about the inventory and survey that she did, and then I'll talk a little bit about the opinion surveys that we did, and then about next steps.
In November, I did a survey, went through and did an inventory of the area and did parking counts. So gonna start by showing you guys the study area, just then discuss the inventory, then we'll go through how the parking's being utilized in the area, discuss turnover in the area. I'll briefly touch on a couple points on the survey, and then Sarah will go into that more. I'll discuss some conclusions throughout the presentation, and Sarah will talk about what's next. The study area is shown, outlined in the orange color, and with that, we also looked at public and private parking. The public parking is in green, the, or, yes, and the private parking is in blue. And then we also narrowed down and did a smaller study along Swift Street and Armour, and those areas are outlined in a heavier black. Looking at the inventory, we just put some numbers in there to give you kind of an idea of what the parking looks like. You can see that there's quite a bit of parking throughout the area. There's a total of over 3,600 spaces with a thousand of those being public spaces. When we looked at this, we noticed over in the, between Armour and 18th, that there's a lot of private parking, but probably not parking that would be used in the downtown area. So we did decide to remove that from the inventory and the study. And with removing the areas, the Dairy Queen, the medical facility, sorry, the large parking lot, and then the bowling alley, that took it down to a total of 2,463 parking places available in this area. We did five different survey periods. I'm going to highlight four of them here, one in the morning, one in the evening, one over lunch, and then the final one, we did a turnover count over the lunch period. The first one was in the morning, did a count between 8:00 AM and 10:00 AM, walked around the area from City Hall along the north side of the study area and then back around the south side. During this counted cars through the area, and it's broke down into different percentages of utilization through the area. You could tell in the morning, there's quite a bit of parking available. The area, I don't know if you could see my mouse on your screen?
I don't see it.
The area at Swift and Armour to the, just to the east, is the heavy, most heavy usage during the morning.
That's where Lamont is.
There we go.
That's where the bakery is.
And if we look at the actual percentages for the area, even though there's higher usage there, there's still parking available. It's over 75, but just under 80% of usage. And then right behind that area also was high usage, and that's just over 90%. The next period was between 5:00 and 7:00. We decided to do this on a Thursday night because Thursday night tends to be a heavier use happy hour, so we figured that would be a night to judge a heavy use in the area, especially back where the entertainment district tends to be with the different bars and restaurants. With that, we did see heavier usage at Swift and Armour and back by Chicken and Pickle and the other breweries and stuff, and we, we expected that. Again, if you look at the actual percentages with the heavy usage, there are a couple spots that are, are full, but there are still spots that are available. And if you look at adjacent spots, adjacent blocks, there's availability in parking. The next period was over lunch, and this was probably the heaviest usage that we seen throughout the period. And Swift and Armour, for the most part, becomes the heaviest usage place. We did notice that the area right by CVS on Swift doesn't get a lot of parking. So people don't, we thought Armour would be a barrier to parking, but it seems that Swift is more of a barrier. The percentages are a lot higher during this period. But again, if you look at the adjacent blocks, you will see that there is parking availability. So those areas that, right in front of the building, they do fill up pretty quick, and they have a lot of parking going there, but usually within a block, you're going to find a spot where you can park. The next part we did, over the lunch period, we counted, did a count once an hour, went through to analyze turnover. The first one was at 10:00 AM, and you could see there's quite a bit of availability throughout the area. At this point, the breakfast, First Watch had a lot of usage, but the rest of the area, there was, and also back 21st and Swift, there was heavier usage back there. The next period went, we went through was at 11:00, and you could see that the usage really starts to pick up and gets heavier during that time period, and especially east of Swift on Armour. But if you look west of Swift, there's not a lot of parking there. At noon, it jumps up a lot more, and pretty much the same thing, east of Swift is pretty heavy, but west of Swift, there is parking availability. And then at 1:00, it starts to die back down. That area west of Swift stays pretty full, and also north of Armour, but again, south and west stays pretty open, has a lot of availability. Looking at it overall, it'll, the parking builds up to noon and then starts dropping back down during this time period, with the heaviest being almost at 75% capacity. Turnover during the period, just to explain turnover a little bit, how it's calculated as you go through each period, count the cars. When we did it, we recorded the last three of the license plate, and then that would allow us to see if that car was still there during the next period we went through. So if it didn't have the license plate still there, we figured that was under an hour. If it was there during two time periods, an hour to two. If it was there three or more, over two hours. And at the three or more, if it was there in three or more periods, and over the two hours, then they were exceeding the parking restrictions throughout the area. And you can see that there were 30 vehicles that did exceed the parking period, and from being out there, I would guess it's mostly employees. I did see employees running up to move their cars, thinking I was going to take it home too.
Nice.
Through the area, you could, the higher the number shows the more turnover that's occurring. So during the period, cars are staying a shorter amount of time, and the space is being used more often. The lower numbers could also indicate that some spaces aren't being used. So even though it looks like there's not as much turnover happening because a car might be there for a long period, there could also be spaces that aren't being used. And then here's a map showing the turnover through the area, and interesting is the places that had the higher parking had the most turnover through the area. And there's the turnover rate. So First Watch had a, quite a bit of turnover. Almost all the cars were gone within the next period that we would go through and, and check it, so. And then when you get to the area down in orange, down south of Armour, and then the area in red, those were mostly employees parking in those areas and being there pretty much all day. So a couple of things on the survey that I wanted to highlight in my part, because they kind of related to the data that we found, we, it was similar to it. In the general survey that was sent out to everybody, about 75% of the people who took the survey rated parking in downtown area as convenient. And about 45% found a parking space in less than two minutes, and 82% found a space within five minutes. And Sarah will go over the rest of the survey.
Any questions for Billy about the utilization before we move on to the opinion survey?
Did you draw any conclusions from that, or your job was just to observe and report?
Yeah, it, there's ample parking in downtown, but it's not always right in front of where people tend to be parking or using the most. Because like the east side of Swift, we saw where it was constantly full, but if people parked on the other side and walked the block, there, there was a lot of parking available. So I think a lot of it's teaching people where parking is available. A lot of the side streets had parking availability. One of the things I noticed, the public lot back by Chicken and Pickle and stuff, when I was walking down one of the streets, it, there's a sign for public parking, but then when you walk down, there's another lot that's private. So I could understand if people are getting confused and not finding that lot back there. So I think some better signage and educating people where available parking is. Also looking at where employees are parking, because during that period, there were 30 people that were there longer than the two-hour allotment. And like I said, there were four or five employees that all ran out of the same business to move their cars. And throughout the week, I'd seen those same cars there, so they park right in front of the businesses all day long. So I think maybe some, looking at where employees are parking, might free up some of the spaces up front also.
That was one of the things I noticed too. And then I also noticed that it seems like the private parking, there's a lot of private parking that's very underused.
Yep. Yeah, so I don't know if there's some agreements during hours that they're not working that could be reached. There's also that lot over by Chicken and Pickle that's all blocked off.
Yeah.
And I know that's one of the areas people are like, we don't have enough parking. So I don't know if something can be done there to open that up, because that would open up an incredible amount of parking for back in that area. There is that big public lot that has parking, but I think it's, it's, you don't drive down there if you're going to most of those places. So I think educating will help with that, but also I think that other lot could be beneficial, but that is privately owned.
Yeah, that lot is owned by...
You need a giant neon arrow, you know, park here.
Well, you're stealing my thunder here.
Right.
Well, I know that the guy, the owner from Repeal, they reached out to the owner who owns that lot, and it's the situation that she lives in Cincinnati or somewhere and wanted an absurd amount of money just to let them park there, which is very frustrating.
Well, let me go through our downtown parking surveys and some of the conclusions that Billy's discussing. We also draw...
Sarah, are they aware of what we've done for that parking lot there from, across from Paul and Jack's?
I, I don't know.
We, I think that's private.
Well, it was, but I think we discussed in previous, now how, where the public is, I'm not sure, but I think on Billy's report, it, it was not as highly utilized, so compared to a lot that people are familiar with. Again, going back to education, I think that's probably part of something we, opportunity...
The lot to the south, you mean?
No, no, the parking lot directly to the east, right south of the, you know, the, a big...
Yeah, that actually came up in our survey. So if you don't mind, we'll, we'll kind of come to that as we talk about this. So we did two surveys in the months of November and December. One was a general survey that we wanted everybody who we could get to take. The other one was specifically for downtown business owners. We had 398 responses to our general survey and 53 for business owners. We were pretty happy. I would have liked to have gotten to 1,000, but we were pretty happy. The general survey, we asked people about travel mode, how they get to downtown, convenience, potential barriers to finding parking spaces, decision-making on where to park, and accessibility. And then for business owners, we asked them also about convenience, but also about business needs, perceptions from their employees and customers, and peak times for their businesses. So for the general survey, we'll start with that one. People's primary connection to downtown, a lot of people are coming here to visit downtown. And we have some people who live in downtown or work here. A lot of the others actually should be in one of these other categories. They, they work in downtown, or they live in North Kansas City, but not in downtown. So they're, they put themselves in the other category. A lot of the people who took the survey are in downtown very frequently, either daily or several times a week, so they're familiar with the area. How do people get here? Mostly, they are driving, driving themselves or driving with someone else. If you think back to, and the reason I wanted to highlight this is if you think back to our list of parking management strategies, one of the strategies to address parking challenges is to encourage people to use some other mode so that you have fewer cars. What this suggests to us, only 8% of people come downtown by walking, biking, or using transit, is that we might have some room to address parking by trying to get people to not bring a car that they need to park. That might be a strategy to pursue. How long do people stay? People generally stay, most frequently down for one to three hours. We do have some people who are here all day because they are, are working in the area. I find parking to be pretty convenient. We asked people if it was convenient and easy to find, less convenient than some areas, but overall not bad. Inconvenient and difficult to find, a reason to walk, bike, or use transit, or a deterrent to visiting the area. 74% say parking is at least somewhat convenient, which pretty much measures up with what we're seeing in the parking space inventory, with we have a pretty good amount of parking, and generally, it's, it's not too far that you need to go to find a parking space. We asked people if they'd ever given up in trying to find a parking space and just left downtown, and 86% said either that had never happened to them, or it had happened once or twice. So again, it matches up with the data that we've collected on parking utilization. We asked people how hard or easy it was for them to find a parking space, and we asked this question in two ways. One way we asked it is how people go about finding a parking space. Do you just drive right to it? Do you need to circle the block? 69% of people said they found a parking space immediately, or they found one by circling the block one time. Very few people have to circle the block multiple times to find a parking space. We also asked them how long it takes them to find a parking space. 45% said either right away or within one to two minutes. That percentage jumps up to 83% if you go up to five minutes. So 83% of people are taking less than five minutes to find a parking space in downtown. So what conclusions can we draw? One is that downtown parking is, is pretty convenient. 74% say it's very or somewhat convenient. 59% of people have never not found a parking space. 69% of people can find a space either immediately or by circling the block one time. So overall, we feel pretty good about this. We also asked if people had ever used accessible parking of our handicapped parking spaces. About 10% of our respondents said yes, either currently or at some time in the past, they've been a user of accessible parking. And we asked them what they thought about convenience. If you compare accessible parking to all parking spaces, accessible parking is less convenient for people to find in downtown. So that seems to, you know, the conclusion we... find in downtown. So, that seems to, you know, the conclusion we draw from this, 40% of people said it was inconvenient and difficult to find or a reason not to visit downtown versus 22% of people who would say that for all parking. So, one of the conclusions about convenience we draw from that is that accessible parking is less convenient than parking overall. We asked some questions about potential barriers we thought people might experience in finding a parking space where they would want one. One is walking, how far would you be willing to walk? The answers to this question indicate it's not the barrier we thought it might be because people are willing to walk up to two to three blocks to find a parking space, or at least they're willing to tell us this. We also asked, the last time you visited downtown North Kansas City, did you visit more than one establishment? And about 60% of people said yes, the last time I was here, I went to more than one place. I might have stopped at CVS and then gone over to lunch at Kelso's. And getting from point A to point B, or establishment number one to establishment number two, 80% of people will walk from one place to another. So, that also seems to indicate to us that walking around downtown is not a major barrier to people. We thought, well, people might prefer one type of parking space over another. Maybe you'd rather park off the street rather than on the street so that people don't run into you, or maybe you really can't parallel park and you prefer angled parking, who knows? So, we asked if there's a preference and really it doesn't look like there's a preference for one type of parking space over another. This was pretty evenly distributed between on-street and off-street. The only thing is, nobody prefers a parallel parking space over anything else, but overall, probably not a strong preference here. I was thinking Armour Road might be a barrier. For instance, if I'm going to Chapels, I might not take a space on the north side of Armour Road because then I'm going to have to cross the street and it can get pretty busy with traffic. But overall, it didn't look like there was a strong barrier posed by Armour Road when we looked at answers to this question either. I was kind of surprised by this, to be honest. We also asked about, do you know where public parking lots are located? And this one was interesting is that, you know, three-fourths of the people taking the survey are pretty familiar with downtown. So, there were a lot of people said, "Yes, I know where the public off-street parking is." But 43% of people were either doubtful or said, "I don't know where that's located." So, to us and all these questions about barriers, knowledge appears to be maybe the biggest barrier to finding a parking space where you want one. It's just knowing where that public off-street parking is located. And this gets back to your comment about, do people know about the NT parking lot? We did have a couple of people who in comment sections wrote out, "I'm not sure if I can park in certain places," and that that is a deterrent for some people. So, you know, this question and the comments that people have left, we think that knowing when you can park where is definitely something that we need to address. We also asked one question where we asked people to rank what was most important, what were the most important considerations in deciding where to park. You know, we asked people to rank all five of these, one through five, with one being the most important consideration and five being the least important consideration. They're shown here and we've highlighted which answers got the most responses in each category. And they're also ranked more or less from top to bottom, the overall cumulative most important at the top and the least important at the bottom. So, it was interesting to us that ease of finding a parking space turned out to be cumulatively the most important thing to people, even more important than the distance from destination. So, it's more important to be able to find a space quickly and easily than it is for that space to be right in front of where you're going, which was not really what we were expecting. We were expecting distance from destination to be number one. So, that gets back to the idea of knowledge. It's important for people to know where to go to find a space and that is the number one priority. And a comfortable or enjoyable walk to my destination was at the bottom. I was also kind of surprised that safety and security was down, it was number four. That might be because people overall feel pretty safe in North Kansas City. But this was kind of interesting to see that hierarchy of what was most important to people. So, that was the general parking survey that we asked everybody to answer. We also asked some specific questions of downtown business owners. One of the questions we asked them was, and I'm just kind of, kind of hit the high points of this one, what is the biggest transportation issue facing your business? And we asked them to pick one from this long list. Not probably a big surprise that the number one answer was inability to find parking close by. We were kind of surprised by the second most popular answer, which was loading and unloading or delivery access. We, in putting together the answers to this question, we're thinking about all possible transportation issues that might face a business. We really didn't think loading or unloading would be that big of a deal. So, we're interested to kind of dive into these answers a little bit to see, is that in a particular area or block, or is that kind of scattered all over downtown? And then number, number three on here is other, other can really be, is either no, there's not a big issue, or parking garage. People specifically wanted a garage. There were a few people who are specific about that. We asked business owners, how convenient do you think parking is for your customers? We also asked this about employees, but this question is specifically about customers or visitors to your business, your patrons. 43% of business owners said it was either very or somewhat convenient for their customers. It's interesting to us to compare this to the answer to that question from the general parking survey, which was 74% of people said it was at least somewhat convenient. So, business owners seem to have a more negative impression of parking in downtown than people who are visiting downtown, and we thought that was very interesting, which might be related to this question of, do you hear complaints from customers? Oops. And, you know, people are more likely to hear complaints about parking maybe than compliments about parking. But this to us suggests that we might have a knowledge issue, maybe a where is parking available issue, but also a PR issue around parking. Then we asked business owners, what improvements, transportation improvements would benefit your business? For this question, we allowed them to select as many as they wanted to. Again, more parking, even if it was paid, was the number one answer. But 30% selected improved signage, and that was the second most popular answer. And also something that's a lot cheaper than providing more parking. Number three was more turnover. This was another thing that was kind of interesting. We got a lot in the survey of complaints about parking enforcement. People don't like getting parking tickets. They would like us to get rid of the two-hour time restriction on Armour Road and Swift. We would like less enforcement. And then on the other hand, we have businesses saying, "We want more turnover. In order to have more turnover, we need more enforcement." So, it's kind of a chicken and the egg, or you're damned if you do and damned if you don't issue.
Well, they gotta tell their employees to quit parking.
That's a whole other issue. So, this is, you know, so it's interesting that more turnover was identified as a more popular answer. And then the fourth most popular answer here is that no changes are necessary. On the one hand, that's great to hear. On the other hand, you know, clearly people also want us to make some changes also.
Would there ever be a thought of doing meters, like specifically?
Right. So, that is definitely something that would be parking management strategy. It's interesting that we were preparing this presentation for you tonight while also, you know, seeing lots of discussion about parking meters in the city market. That could be one way to encourage turnover, but we also saw a lot of comments in both surveys about free parking and the value of that. So, I think that would be a question of, are we at that point? Is there a lot of support for that as a way to encourage turnover? I think we will want to investigate that a little bit more because that is a possible strategy.
I think there's a trade-off. If you have decent, well-advertised off-street parking, garage, and meters on the street, I think that you could have some offset there.
Right. But that's definitely, if we wanted to encourage more turnover, that would be a way to do that. And the question would be, does the benefit of that outweigh some of the cost, the cost of installing meters and doing enforcement and, you know, public perception about whether we should do that or not? So, we asked where employees park. And while there are employers who have off-street, their own private parking, we do have a lot of employees who are using on-street or public lots. And employers could pick more than one answer here. We asked them where their employees park, not necessarily where do you provide them with parking. So, that's the, any questions about the data that we've presented or any, anything that's unclear about all of that?
Back to the one, it was right at the beginning of the business one about employees, or no, patrons, patrons. It was the, yeah, I think this is interesting. You've got 45% you say believe the parking is at least somewhat convenient, but if you look at the bottom two, that's, that's, that's a pretty hefty amount of people that think it's not convenient.
It's like 50/50 split.
Yeah, it's almost 50/50, isn't it?
Yeah, it's pretty close. What's interesting to us, so if we think about next steps, we still want to do some analysis of the business owner parking survey. So, one of the things that I looked at just really quickly, we asked, we asked business owners, which block in downtown is your business located? So, we kind of see, are there differences in different parts of downtown? So, and we haven't had a chance to dive into that a whole lot, but I just looked at, what's their perception of convenient, inconvenient in this question? Is there a difference if you are north of Armour Road or south of Armour Road, or east or west of Swift?
Exactly what I was thinking.
So, you get into smaller groups. So, I mean, it's, it's not scientific, it's just opinions. What's interesting is that it's not what we would have expected in just looking at that. So, if you look at south of Armour Road, west side of Swift, where Chicken and Pickle and Cinder Block are all located, where we've gotten a lot more complaints in the last year or so about parking. We've got 16 business owners from that area took the survey, and they are the most satisfied. They think it's the most convenient of any of the other areas. I mean, it's a small sample size, maybe it's skewed in some way. We thought, oh, the people who are on the east side of Swift, south of Armour, there's those huge parking lots, they're going to be the most satisfied. And they're the least satisfied. There were six people out of 15 in that section who said it's very inconvenient. So, and then we've got north of Armour Road, west side of Swift, they are totally split. Two said very convenient, two said somewhat convenient, two were neutral, three said somewhat inconvenient, and two said very inconvenient. Who knows? They're all over the place. So, we need to do some more analysis, but one of the things that we really think in looking at this is that there is definitely a PR issue about, is parking, and it's very, it doesn't necessarily do what you think it's gonna, gonna do, or, you know, I think people's definition of inconvenient has to be- Yeah, and that might be a big-
A lot, very vast, yeah.
It has to be. It was, it was very funny to, to-
Yes.
It didn't match up with what we thought it would be.
Could be businesses often, they, so I'm gonna blame parking. Parking's my whoa this month.
Who knows?
Zach, do you, do you, do you agree with all of this? I mean, is that the parking thing as a business owner down there? I mean-
It's, I think as soon as you tell people where to park, it's like, it's never an issue. Like, we don't get a lot of negative stuff about it that people tell us. It's, it's not been, like, I, I don't personally think that it's, or at least from our customers, that it's an issue at all. People don't mind, or at least our customers don't mind driving around a little bit.
Walking a block or two.
Or walking a block or two, yeah. You go to any other district even similar to us in any other city, one, you're automatically paying for parking, no matter where you park at, or you're walking even further, and, or you're paying for a metered parking and you're still walking more than two or three blocks. So, yeah.
So, for, for next steps, we've got some additional analysis that we want to do in the business owner survey. We're also starting to plan on some focus groups with business owners to, we want to present this data and get their feedback and start thinking about, what does this really mean? Why do you think it's convenient in an area where we hear the most complaints? Like, let's, let's dig into this a little bit more. What would be helpful or not helpful? What could, you know, so to do some of that work, we're, we haven't scheduled those yet, but we're, we're working on getting those together. And then at some point, we will probably have kind of a more general, you know, public kind of meeting to present some of this, this data. And then we're also planning some client, survey validation. We'll probably repeat some of these counts and the utilization and turnover some point later this spring when the weather gets a little nicer. You, our thought was, once we figured out how many parking spaces we had, that people might think, is that, is that for real? I mean, so we do want to validate some of this and then start to develop strategies to talk about with people. We, you know, we, there were several comments in both of the surveys about parking garage, parking garage, parking garage. When we look at this data, we don't think it supports the cost of building a parking garage. But we do want to, you know, take feedback on strategies, present strategies for, you know, suggestions. But what's standing out to us right now is that a lot of it is about helping people find the parking we have and not necessarily creating more. So, that's-
You know what's interesting, Sarah, is to do the same analysis with the Armour Road changes. Because you kind of have an idea how many spots are gonna be, right?
Right. So, and that's, at some point, we will get into that. We have not, you know, kind of, one of the questions at the end of that study was, if we change this to parallel parking, what's the net loss? We haven't attempted to define that yet, but yeah, at some point, we'll throw that into the mix also.
Yeah.
But at this point, we would just wanted to find out any, anything that we particularly should be investigating or adding to our to-do list at this point before we start taking this out to the public?
One thing that might be helpful, I was thinking back to one of the survey questions, and it was ease of finding a parking spot, not necessarily distance. And so, you might really look into what, what makes a parking spot easy to find? Is it the lighting? Is it the entrance? Is it the space, the, you know, some people with larger vehicles might just have to balk at a certain number of parking spots that are too tight, right? Is there something that we could look into that when people say, boy, that's, I park, you know, when I go downtown to Colony or to the movie theater, I always park in this one row of spots because it's just the easiest and I'm pointed the right way when I leave. And so, it might be something like that that we could look into of, with the parking we have, what would make it easier? Is it, you know, painting or, you know, the curb cut or something like that that, that affects what people view as easy parking?
Yeah, it would also be really, when you start thinking strategically about maybe, or like if signage is a, a thing, to maybe see if we can get some of the private developers on board who do have private lots to get them to, even if it's at the city cost to put signage out, that they would agree to let public use it at certain times. Because that's, that's the thing, like, there, there is tons of private lots that people use because no one's enforcing it. And, but if there was actually signage out that had that, it would be even better.
Another thing-
Billy has discovered at least one where the property owner will have you towed immediately whether the business is open or not. So, we have a whole spectrum, really.
And that might be, one thought is look into signage, is one opportunity would be, can our signage be consistent? So, most of the people on the survey are repeat visitors, right? They're people that come here often. But even though I'm repeat, there's, I still don't know when I pull into some lots, am I looking for a sign up on the wall? Am I looking, is it down here? Was it when I entered? If we could be consistent on where we post signage, I think as you're looking and you're watching for traffic and you're worried about your kids in the backseat, you know, you're trying to figure out, is this a private lot or not? Where should I be looking, you know?
I forget where I was.
Same for, same for public, right? Is this a public spot or not? Maybe it's color coding? I don't know. Something that could make it easier.
I forget where I was recently, but all the parking signs were blue. That made me think of that. And you knew it was parking because they were all blue. It's a good idea.
Have you looked into any, speaking of, on Armour Road, if, if these businesses had entrance from the rear, from the backside? Because there is parking, you know, behind the buildings. And if they had entrances from the backside, then they wouldn't need so much on, on-street parking.
True.
Do we, do we have any idea what's going into Tannen Floral? I mean, that's gonna be a-
I've heard a rumor, but I'm not sure I'd want to repeat it.
Yeah, but you know, that could, that could generate a lot more parking.
That's not fair, Sarah.
Go ahead.
We can talk about it later.
I'm kidding.
After, after you adjourn. Okay. Well, if you think of anything, we'll keep you posted about as we get things scheduled for our next steps. I feel- I feel like we've got a lot of great data, and one of our goals tonight was just to make sure that you didn't hear anything in the data that you thought raised any red flags, or you just found unbelievable. So let us know if you think of anything else that you particularly want us to investigate or to highlight as we're thinking about strategies.
The one, and I've mentioned this before, I, you know, I don't want to lose parking downtown, but to get bicycles and walkers through there, it looks like that's gonna have to happen. But what I'd like to see is possibly a different route, maybe behind the businesses.
But we definitely see that as still something to come back around to in the near future, but it...
All right. Well, does anyone else have any other comments? No? All right. I don't see any public, so I don't expect any public comments. Do you got, do the staff have more comments?
I do, have one more comment. I meant to email you all earlier today and ask you to check your schedules, and sorry, got distracted by parking. We're getting started with Gould Evans on our zoning ordinance update, and they would like to schedule a kickoff meeting with you all. We are using Planning Commission as the advisory group for the zoning ordinance update with a couple of guests. Also, Richard Lanning is interested in being on our advisory committee, and we'll probably have one other more residential-oriented guest joining you. They would like to have that meeting with you in two weeks, on the 18th, your usual six o'clock time. So wanted to have you all check your calendars and let us know if that night would work to have a quorum of you. We would notice that as a special meeting, just to talk about the zoning ordinance update.
January 18th?
January 18th. Today's the 4th, so two weeks from tonight at six o'clock. I will send you a reminder in the morning, but if you could put that on your calendars, we would really appreciate that. We will also, so in addition to you all and friends as the advisory group, have a staff kind of technical group from all of the city departments, giving them feedback from a staff perspective. Some of this will hopefully be fun. Some nights, we think we'll be able to incorporate this into your usual regularly-scheduled meeting, but particularly, since we had some items this month and they want to take some time with you, this will be a separate meeting.
Do you expect it to just be an hour?
Probably.
Okay.
Unless you all really want to talk about zoning ordinance in a lot of detail, it'll be about an hour.
All right.
And I would also, in the spirit of surveys, we have a survey up right now about the farmer's market, so would encourage you to take that survey. You can find a link to it on the city's website, or on our Twitter feed, or on our Facebook page, so please go and encourage your friends and neighbors to take the farmer's market survey.
You can take it online?
You can take it online.
Oh, okay.
It was in the city newsletter.
Yeah, I was gonna like download that and then like fill it in and try to...
There is a link, there should be a link on that page to tell you where, which you can type into your browser to fill it out online.
Cool. All right. Any more comments from Commissioner?
Just one quick one. If nobody checked, Kansas City started. There was a really good article where North Kansas City got mentioned. It basically was an article talking about what people under 37, millennials, they don't think what, they, they don't want what we think they want. And so they really actually do prefer housing, and they want good schools and things that we didn't realize that they wanted. They did a survey of 208 in Kansas City, and North Kansas City was one of, along with Fairway, Prairie Village, and Brookside, North Kansas City was one of their top residential choices. So there are a lot of people under the age of 37 that have targeted North Kansas City as the place they would like to live. Sarah was quoted in the article. Congratulations.
I'll say, of our four residential neighborhoods, millennials are the largest population group in, or by age, in all of them. Unless you also include Gen Z, so like kids under 18, they are the largest population age group in the avenues by one person.
By one person?
By one person. We have like 500 millennials and 501 Gen Z'ers.
But, yeah, and we've talked in past meetings about, you know, the possible need for future residential in the city, and I think it just kind of highlights what may be coming down the road, is that there may be a real demand for people looking for affordable housing with good schools, with what we've created here, the live-work-play kind of atmosphere. It's a lot of, a lot of good things going, just another credibility for the city and all the work that's done, so great job to the team.
Would you pass along too, to whoever's doing the website, that, and the electronic communications, I think, coming out of the city now are excellent. Excellent. The website is excellent, the communications coming out of here are excellent, and I just, whoever it is, if it's you, thank you.
Mallory does a lot of that.
It's fantastic.
Thanks, Mallory.
Thank you.
The texts you get, are you a little bit...
I love it, I love it.
All right. We're being adjourned.
Good stuff.
Can we, can we have a motion for that?
Oh, was there supposed to be a motion?
Second.
I have all in favor.
Aye.
All right, adjourned. You didn't have that in my little handy-dandy cheat sheet, all right?
Not in yellow, we don't...
Yeah. It's a, it's a script for a...
Donna's in a gavel.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, Laurie, great.
But then, when you didn't highlight the last one... Don't I?
Uh, like...
Do we need to sign that?